Good evening. My name is Martin Brewer. I'm the superintendent of Pioneer School District. My current chair for Mason County Schools. And so, we kind of took the lead with Sheldon's assistance to put this on this evening. The first thing I'd like to start with tonight is just a statement that we do expect Dan Griffey to be here. We did confirm with him, so he should be here during the texting at this point in time. Tim Sheldon canceled last week. And I know that my administrative assistant gave a little bit of heat for doing so because we established this date based on our two reps and their availability. So, you know, if you seek it of doing the same and having, you know, making a call and talking to Tim, I think it would be much appreciated because in the fall, we'd like to do this and get all three of our reps here so we can hear the educational voice of Mason County. With that being said, before we get into some other details, I'd like to go around the room and just have a quick introduction so we all know who's at the table today. And we'll start right here with Pioneer School District. Dale?
I'm Dale McDaniel from Pioneer.
I'm Daniel Harold from Pioneer.
Jason Bailey, Pioneer.
Mike Dogg, Pioneer.
And we thought there'd be a couple more people here, so we're also texting. I can't see if it goes on.
Sean Batso, Superintendent of the School District.
Jay Lee, Pan.
Pan Berger, Breakview.
Jay Emily, Breakview.
Wes Martin, Breakview.
Don Conchino, Superintendent of Marion Night.
So, I mentioned, um, for the, for Marion Night.
Jay Whitebale, for Marion Night.
Pat Cowan, Board Member of Marion Night.
Pat Cowan, Board Member of Marion Night.
Jerry Emily, Board Member from Southside School District. By the way, break there this weekend, guys.
Doris Fonder, Principal Superintendent over Southside.
Tom Federica, Southside.
Sandy Charleswell, Sheldon.
Kerry Davidson, Sheldon.
Ellen Bronfield, Sheldon.
Stella Carr, Sheldon.
Ginger Sessler, Sheldon.
Alex Fossil, Sheldon.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Dan and Drew will introduce themselves a little later. We also have me here today. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Gordon Leach for the Mason County Journal.
Our La Shepherd Bowl with Mason County.
Sorry.
And the exact son.
Deidre Cowan, MasonWebTV.com and Hood Canal Communications.
Thank you so much for coming out. We certainly appreciate it. I do have a few folks that I want to thank for putting this on. Allison and, uh, South, excuse me, Allison and Sheldon provided the food and made the arrangements for the room, so I certainly appreciate that. Also, I want to thank Alan at Marion and Night for putting the agenda together. And I want to thank my personal assistant, Len Chaklos, for pulling, you know, all the strings and bringing it together. So, with, with that being said, we do have opening remarks for, available for our two reps this evening. And we'll start with either one of you on just a five-minute kind of opening statement. So, with that being said, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Drum McEwen. Thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate the opportunity. We did this two years ago, and I find it very valuable. I think we should do it a little more often. It's great feedback for us and just looking forward to the dialogue, going back and forth. You know, over the four years that I've been, been in the House of Representatives, I believe we've made improvements. We've, we've made positive strides, both in funding and reform. Are we done? No. We still got, still got a lot of work to do. And just look forward to partnering with you and moving the ball forward. And can we just stay united and keep the, keep the best ideas out there and what we agree on, we can, we can continue to make progress. And that's, I think, how we get anything done in this state really, is let's, let's focus on where we've got the agreements, and let's go from there and work our way down the list. So, I don't want to, I'm looking forward to hearing from you, so I don't want to take up a lot of time. But real quickly, I do serve on general government and IT, which is essentially like a sub appropriations committee, and then I also serve on appropriations committee. So, I'm on the, strictly on the budget writing side of the House, which is good in fact, that involves evenings and weekends. That's the bad. So, yeah, but again, look forward to hearing from all of you tonight and having that.
Uh, so my name is Dan Griffey. I'm a state representative. This is my freshman year. Just completed my freshman term. I sit on the K-12 education policy committee, so I'm kind of right in the head of this wheelhouse. I've had many conversations with most of the superintendents that I see in the room. And if I haven't had a chance to sit down with you, it's because I represent 18 schools and I'm trying to get to everyone of you. And I would like to meet and know each and every one of you personally. I, I call quite a lot some of the superintendents that you see in the room and just ask advice. We're dealing with this policy in Olympia. What do you think? And it's good for me to have that feedback because a lot of times they just tell me, "No more rules." And I agree. Washington State does rule with an iron fist when it comes to education, and I think a lot more flexibility is going to be necessary in any fix that we have in the future. Prototypical school model was a good idea, but I think we should allow our each and every school to be a prototypical school and ease those restrictions that we have, that we impose on the schools, and let you make local decisions. And I'll be working on what that'll look like next year. And with that, I'll leave it up to your questions. Thank you for having me, man.
Now, what we'll do is, each district, Drew and Dan, the, each district has prepared a speaker to represent their district and share some of the strengths and challenges of each of our specific school districts. And those are going to be focused around what you see there as the six bulleted points, levy cliff, collective bargaining, professional learning time, non-high fees, facilities, and truancy board. And so, challenges and success stories from each district will be shared at this point in time, approximately 10 to 10 minutes per district. We're going to start with the Pioneer School District, and Dr. Dale McDaniel is the spokesperson for our district.
Thank you, Marty. I'll apologize to you for talking to you from the back or the front. The worst thing I could do is to put the press at my back. That's actually, that could be my best side, so I, and again, I'll speak kind of loudly here. Drew just mentioned that we had done this a couple of years ago, and more specifically, almost to the date we, we had met 17 months ago. And a great deal has happened in that time. And I want to start my little brief talk by saying that we appreciate very much your responsiveness to the Pioneer School District. We feel like both of you answer phone calls and you write back to us, and we just feel like you're real partners of Pioneer, and we very much appreciate that. Specifically, we appreciate your support for the Senate Substitute House Bill 2449, which many of you know is the truancy intervention and prevention bill that just recently passed and was, and was at least partially signed by the governor. What you may not know is that part of my doctoral dissertation was about the BECA bill and about the truancy bill. And it's very near to my heart, and near to my heart. I was in Spokane and served on a community truancy board for five or six years, and I think that the power of truancy boards is profound, and I applaud you and congratulate you for writing that into the bill. I know both of you voted in favor of that bill, and I want you to know how much we appreciate it. I would encourage the boards in this room that if you've not talked about a community truancy board, that you need to know that that is cutting edge. It is, it has been recognized as a significant part by OSPI of the kinds of work that communities can do to improve student achievement, is to get the kids in school. And I would hope that when Sheldon plans on their community truancy board, that we allow ourselves to be partners with that and then maybe share some of the volunteer time. So, that's my good news. My bad news is that however, 17 months ago, we talked to you about two specific things and asked for your diligent help in these two areas. And it may be contrary to some of the stances that you take publicly. I have collected quite a collection of letters sent to my house by both of you and articles in newspapers, and quite frankly, we disagree about some of these topics. And one of them is the supermajority requirement for bonds. You may remember that we pled with you 17 months ago because Pioneer was offering its 14th attempt to build our own building and pay our own taxes with the supermajority requirement. And since that time, there have been scores of school districts, the closest one would be Yelm, the scores of school districts that have failed bond after bond after bond with 52% or 56% or 58%. And in my mind, that's they're asking permission to tax their own people to build their own buildings, and yet we don't have the support from the legislature for a simple majority. And I reminded you of this 17 months ago, that neither of you, neither of you, with all due respect, were elected by a supermajority. We were elected by a supermajority because frankly, most of us run unopposed. And that's because nobody wants our job. And as school board members, we, we're pretty protective about the simple majority. And you may also know that there is a bill in the hopper supported by Representative Gregerson. We think it's House Bill 1946, and she's going to offer a compromise position whereby perhaps bonds could be offered to you at specific times of year, which might allow for a simple majority instead of a supermajority. And all of you who know me know how passionate I am, that after 16 or 17 or 18 elections, finally, a school district is allowed to build its own building and tax its own people. And thank God Pioneer finally passed theirs. We broke ground here last week, and we're pretty excited about it. But we shouldn't have to run 14 elections to build our own buildings. And my thought is that when Sheldon runs their, their bond issue perhaps next spring, that they shouldn't have to get a 60% vote either. The second thing that we asked for from you 17 months ago was we asked you to pay for the clearery. Now, we know that you made some changes in the MSOCs, and we know that you've changed the K-5 ratios, and we know you've improved kindergarten, and we're very appreciative of that. But you are still the only legislature in the United States that's under sanction from the state Supreme Court. And you are the only legislature in the entire country that's being charged a contempt of court sanction of $100,000 a day. And in my family and in my neighborhood, we've decided that we're going to vote for every legislature who's not under sanction. And that causes us to wonder what in the world is happening in the state of Washington that would cause you to be the only one? And by the way, that wasn't a 5-4 decision. That was a unanimous decision by our Supreme Court to hold you in contempt of court. That contest that we call McCleary actually started clear back in February of 2010. So, this has actually been going on for six years. You were held as unlawful dependents, an unlawful dependence on local levies, and that was in January of 2014. The contempt violation happened, and I happened to be there in the court that day in September of 2014, not because you hadn't helped kindergarten, not because you hadn't helped the MSOCs, and not because you hadn't reduced class size. You were held in contempt because you did not have a specific plan of taxation to reduce our dependency on local levies. And we still have an unreasonable and illegal dependency on local levies, and we're asking for you to do that. And finally, in your literature, you, you complain about having another 176-day session. In fact, I think you actually blamed it on the governor. But my point is that nobody has to have a long legislative session if you will just plan to figure out a resource way where we can pay for McCleary, reduce our dependency on local levies, and then allow all of us to, to run the school the way the Constitution allows. The last thing I want to say is that part of our disconnect with, with the way we fund schools is that some school districts are allowed to add try-days after try-days after try-days. We believe that Everett right now has as many as 80 try-days, which of course is a disproportionate number of salary days for their employees over those of us who offer three days or four days or five days. And we believe that that's going to have to be a part of the solution. Figure out how to fund this, reduce our dependency on local levies, and pay for McCleary. That's the same thing we asked you 17 months ago in your article, that you hear us clearly that we want McCleary gone. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'll give you an opportunity to respond or just pass, and we can move to the next district.
So, a couple of comments real quick on the, the supermajority on the bonds is upstated, and I do support that. The speaker has to bring the bill for, for Florida to vote on, though. He didn't do that. So, to suggest that we've blocked that, I think candidly is inaccurate. There was never a vote. And so, the, we're, the, we have adjourned, and so there'll have to be new legislation drafted going forward on that. And I do support that for local school districts. I support two-thirds of the legislature to raise taxes, but I don't support that concept at the local level. And McCleary funding as far as a specific tax is concerned, I introduced legislation that, that we would have a separate K-12 budget that we would do. The most stable funding source we have in the state is the general fund. We utilize 48% of it for K-12 funding. Why don't we do that first and pass a K-12 budget that is enacted and signed into law by March 30th of each year? You have plenty of time then to plan. You're not, there is no specific tax in this state that doesn't fluctuate. They all do. Subsequently, that's why we have multiples of them. They all went into the general fund. Let's call the general fund our revenue source for K-12. Let's pass an education budget first, and then we move on to the rest of the operating budget. One of the inherent difficulties we have are the budget forecast, the revenue forecast in this state. And we rely heavily on that and the caseload forecast in order to form the budget, which is why we sometimes go, oftentimes go into the special session. And because we're getting those forecasts so late in the cycle, we have less than 30 days to put $38 million together. That's, that's the reality. And if you look at the votes in the House and the Senate, by almost, by near unanimous support, both the, the initial enacted budget and supplemental budget this past year passed with, I think there, in the House, I think there was four or five no votes, and in the Senate, there was one no vote. That, that's not this partisan bickering that you hear about on the federal level. At the state level, I think there is a lot of work to get it, that both sides to come together to solve that issue on the education side. Again, I reiterate, let's do a separate K-12 budget that becomes a one-line item, and the general budget will move forward.
Okay. I couldn't agree with you more on the two-thirds, we don't need a two-thirds majority or supermajority to pass local bonds. I think that we, in the legislature, should hold ourselves to a two-thirds majority vote before we raise your taxes globally. The, the compromise that you spoke of that I think is going to be taken is if you run your construction bond levy in November, you can, you can pass it with a 50% majority. The idea there is is the November election, you're going to have a higher turnout. I believe that bill will have bipartisan support, and I believe that bill will pass next year. So, I think if Sheldon knows to run their bonds, they will, they will fit that requirement. Nobody wants to get the clearery after back more than I do. We have taken, taken long stride steps to get to a reasonable solution. You even put up, you, you spoke of a couple of things that are a problem that we need to, to work on, and it's part of the levy solution or the McCleary solution. That is a ridiculous number of try-days. I know our schools cannot compete as aggressively in the new teacher market as those schools that can offer all of those extra days of pay. That is going to have to be in the final solution. We're going to have to make up our mind and say that, that there is some cost in the rural communities, so, you know, we have to drive further to get to, for our teachers to get to the grocery store. All those sort of things need to be factored into a solution. So, we're, it's not going to be just as easy as write a check because there's a lot of reforms that have to happen, and I think that's why it's taken as long as it's taken. I want to see some reforms on the prototypical school model to where, you know, we allow you as principals and superintendents to run a school, and we write you a check that is big enough to cover the costs. And I think I'll be, we're going to be working on ratcheting down the, the prototypical school, giving back more local control when I get back to Olympia. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Hood Canal School District.
Sean Batso, Superintendent of the Principal of Diddieville, joining the Diddyville PD Business Manager. Hopefully the most important job right now. I'm still doing all this great stuff right now. I thought it would be good to just maybe some context for Hood Canal's interesting school district in and of itself, right? Over a billion dollars of assessed valuation. We have about 304 students at this time. 70% of our students qualify for free and reduced-price meals. At this point in time, most people think when you hit to 106 and 101 that we're a tribal school. We are not. About 45% of our students are Native American. The majority of our students do not qualify as Native Americans at this time. We've seen a large increase in Mason County, at least in our area, for the number of students receiving special services. So, at this point in time, Hood Canal, it's about 25% of our student body. And then also, as we talked about last time too, and it really hasn't gone down, is the rate of homeless students in our area as well. So, about 10 to 11% of our students qualify homeless. That would be anywhere between 30 and 40 students out of the 300 that we offer at this particular time. We did want to start with celebration though, because there's always some silver lining, some great stuff going on in schools, so we did want to share that. We were able to pass our three-year maintenance and operation levy, which is really nice. We've raised the rate from 153 to about a dollar 61, and then hopefully at the end of the third year, it will be a dollar 77 for that raise. We're hoping that we can continue to use some of those dollars to qualify for reduction in class sizes, as well as offer programs. You know, one of the things that's interesting is we had to raise our levy rate to give our kids access to things like art and music. So, one of the things that we've decided is our kids need those experiences to be able to access the core curriculum. So, but that is a celebration, and we look forward to doing that. We did apply for and receive this grant called No Child Nurtened Side, which is kind of fun, right? So, when you think of the Hood Canal community, it's kind of nice to go up into the Olympics, but we did get that grant. It's an opportunity for kids to do experiential-based learning outdoors. So, we're really excited about getting kids out camping and hiking and learning maybe a little bit about how that world of school applies in the outdoor world, and just getting kids to be more active. We are looking at starting a comprehensive preschool next year. So, currently at Hood Canal School, we offer services for special needs preschool students, but we realize the need in our area for an inclusive preschool, or what we're hoping will be a preschool opportunity for all the students in our area, not just those with special needs. So, we're on our way to creating that a level of it up for us in the fall. We started this year by creating a job shadow program. One of the things that students kept asking me was, in our eighth grade anyways, Mr. Batso, we're not seeing the connection between school and the world of work. So, we started a job shadow program this year to get the kids out in the community working as job shadows with folks in our area to better experience how the world of school and work kind of connect to apply for them. That's been a unique opportunity for us. We're also looking for ways, though, in light of the Core 24, to expand credit opportunities for our eighth graders. So, we're looking forward to talking with Sheldon a little bit about how that credit system might work so kids in eighth grade can start earning high school credit and get an opportunity to learn and grow with us as well. Given the high needs of students, both special needs as well as those qualifying free and reduced-price meals, as well as those qualifying homeless, we had to add a mental health school counselor to our, our list this year. Mental health counseling in our area has become something that is almost like a school counselor, a lot more specialized, but we added that as a component of our program because we started to see the needs of kids really experiencing some pretty, we call them traumatic experiences, whether that be, you know, death rates or suicide prevention or those kinds of things. It just seems like kids in our area come with a lot more need than we're used to at this particular time. And then we're also looking at our area for field renovation and the possibility of building renovations as well, as the campus starts to grow and improve a little bit too, so we're looking for those. Our challenges aren't, aren't different than probably most of you are experiencing. Finding new staff, gentlemen, right now is really a tough challenge. I think I have eight openings in my building right now. And trying to find, you know, I know that the highly qualified as part of the ESEA has switched a little bit, but truly finding good quality teachers has been a challenge up north. We're looking for eight new teachers at this time. That's still an issue. Collective bargaining is a huge one, right? We talked about this idea that we needed to up our try-time or personal responsibility as well. So, we went from five days up to 13 in year one and 15 in year two, and that's just to stay competitive in the region, right? More people now are starting to ask a little bit about what are those incentive opportunities or try-times that we have? So, we've decided to increase that a little bit to stay competitive as well. And then we still have the non-high fee. That's a big issue for us. And, you know, I know in our region that we pay money obviously to, to school districts that have high schools to, to help us out, but that still is a rate of about, I think in 14, 15 last school year, we paid about $313,000 for that service. And of course, we pay the Sheldon's rate, obviously their levy rate in order to get that going. So, I know that, I don't know if that's a big, if that's a topic of conversation for most K-8s, but it is, it is for our, our side as well. So, just an opportunity to share some of those celebrations and challenges. So, thanks for being here today. Appreciate it.
Quick, why, your answer is two.
Sure.
You have 304 students. What's your total budget?
Our total budget right now, if she goes after it? Five?
Five point three.
Five point three million. Thanks. Yeah.
Your, your homeless definition you're using is the Mckinney mento?
Correct. That is the opposite of Mckinney mento. Not everybody, or that's how I tell people, not everybody in that scenario means they're out in the tent, you know, out at, out at the Olympics.
I'm really working on, on coming up with a state definition that, that, so we can, you know, if you call yourself homeless and you're living with grandma and grandpa, you got, you know, that's really not homeless. So, I want to work on those numbers, but also work on that definition. I understand that you might be in crisis when you're there, so you might need, need services, but I just think that'd be a form of homeless.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the fact, because I can tighten up a little.
Yeah, we, I think we're going to try to work on that from a K-12 policy point. And the good news about the kindergarten, thank you, that's good. We, any, anyone, any kids we can get early.
Yeah. Preschool early is a big, you know, we're realizing there's not as many seats as there are, they need, so increasing the program offer would be great, get those young ones in there soon.
Yeah, and I, what we, I'd like to get with all of you separately to talk about your early childhood education, how it's going, and see if there's ways that we can streamline and make it easier for you, so, thank you.
I just compliment your staff, the, I live in the district there and the, knowing that I voted for the levy. I, in the community, I don't hear, I don't hear the negatives that I heard 10 years ago.
That's true.
And so, I just hats off to your staff, and I think it's resonating with the community.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah. Can you give, can you plan your, your student and budget?
Student, we are at 665 now, FPD, and our operating budget is right at $9 million. And our non-high fees are about $8,000 to Sheldon. Those are the round numbers.
The what percent? That's about 28% of our levy. Ours.
And that's a real key challenge. I, I don't mean to hijack it, but as we talk about the reduction of local levies, so where do non-high fees, you know, how do we pay those if we no longer tax our local? I mean, it's a, it's a key question to keep in the back of our minds as we reduce. I know in theory Sheldon would reduce, but our only saving grace is to tax our local population to pay our taxes to Sheldon. That's the only way to make ends meet, so. Okay, with that being said, Breakview.
All right. I'm Wes Martin. I'm from the great district of Breakview. I know many of you are in awe, you know. Like, like Dale, I would like to say to Drew and Dan, I think most of us appreciate your willingness to address educational issues and the fact that you're so accessible to the general populace and, and people that just need to reach you about issues. So, thank you. Unlike Dale, I ran a hotly contested race for my, for my board seat, and I won with, I think, like a 90, 80% approval over my competitor, Mr. Brighton. And so, that's right. So, I've got a lot of support, just so you guys know. First of all, I'd like to kind of talk about celebrations. You know, we, we went for a bond and we failed it by, what, like two votes, right? That hurts. And it was because the, the auditor's office couldn't understand what they were voting for. So, apparently they had written all over it, and so it was a no vote, right? So, so we, we understand kind of the, the super, you know, majority thing, and, and we finally passed our bond by something like 11 votes. And we're in a unique, a unique district where 18% of our voters have children, right? So, everybody else is being taxed, you know, for the school district, and we've got actually a lot of support. And so, we've just actually completed our, our modernization project on time, on budget, and, and with a little extra to improve our middle school and technology within the school. And so, it's pretty exciting. If you ever want to, you know, pop into Breakview, talk to Jay, he'll give you a tour. He didn't know what to do. So, also, we have hired a really fantastic staff member, and we're increasing our arts capability tremendously. We like Hood Canal, we like the arts as an important part of children's educational experience, and we're, we're pretty pleased about where that's going. And also, we have been noted for our English language performance last year and mathematics. And one of our students actually won a statewide essay contest by, it was a law enforcement, right? About why not do drugs or why they will never do drugs. And that was a pretty big accomplishment. This, this girl, eighth grader, got a check for $500 for it, and, and a $200 check for winning the regional. So, that was, that was pretty awesome. So, that kind of stuff where we feel like the real celebration is, is that we're accomplishing our, our mission. And that mission, all as board members and superintendents, is to provide our children with an excellent education, the best education that we can possibly provide. Now, that leads me into sort of the challenges, right? And I'm gonna be kind of a broken record here because Dale spoke very passionately, Wood Canal spoke very passionately about this. But the fact that it is very, very difficult for a rural district to compete for good talent, you know, and we're talking professional educators that are going to help us accomplish our mission, right? Well, the state sets, you know, sets the salaries schedule and then the districts can go get levies and, and, you know, create eighty, eighty try days, you know, for, for somebody. We can't do that. And so, we feel like we're, we're sort of under the gun, you know? We have two hundred and twenty students, I think, you know, we're rural, we're, we're non-high districts, we're dealing with the non-high fee. Thanks, Diana. We feed into, into North Basin. Anyway, you know, so there's a lot of challenges and then, and then we get all these ideas from the legislature about what school districts should and have to do. And by the way, we have no clue how you're gonna pay for it, you figure it out, you know, unfunded mandates. All of this stuff really drains, really drains from a district and it really hurts, hurts our, our district. And, you know, we need to be as competitive as possible to maintain our level of education and that level of service to our client, which is our, our children. And so, any help that you guys could, could give us in reducing the mandates that, you know, don't come with a way to pay for it? Or even, or even things that don't make sense for certain districts, right? There's certain mandates that don't make sense for our size of district. It would be really, really appreciated, I think, if we could get some relief. So, that's my, that's my little spiel, broken record and all.
So, you have twenty students and how much is your budget?
Two twenty. Two twenty. Two point eight. Well, I'll start. Yeah, I would like to remove the kind of overreaching burden that the, the state legislature puts on all of our schools. When I make, when I vote in Olympia, I, I have to sit back and, and in my head, I'm thinking, is this gonna put another mandate on the school that they're gonna have to figure out a fund? I mean, it's really hard on the K-12 education committee, there's lots of good ideas, but a lot of those good ideas just puts another mandate on you folks that, and they're not paying for it. So, I'm gonna work on that. I think the reforms to the prototypical school model would, would be a good start. I've asked Dana, she's ESP one fourteen, correct, chair, and I want one thirteen to give a report as well. What are the unfunded mandates you'd like to see taken away? Because I'll tell you what, each school has another idea of what unfunded mandate is. So, it would be neat if we could develop this list. I would not be opposed to running an opus bill that, that kind of took a, a big chunk, a big look at this, these unfunded mandates and fix it as a whole. But, yeah, you have a friend in me in that I would really like you guys to be able to be, able to steer your ship as opposed to the legislature. So, thanks.
I understand, and one other challenge we have to is the, in the legislature is the urban versus rural. And it's not necessarily party affiliated, but there's a fair amount of influence from the urban areas that don't comprehend what we have in this county and, and other similar counties. That's a, that's a challenge we have as well.
Can I say just something more?
Sure.
Talking about underfunded, sometimes, sometimes it's not funded, sometimes it's underfunded.
Yeah.
So, high cap, highly capable students would be what I would consider underfunded. We're required to have a plan, plan is a notebook thick. We really don't have the staff or the capacity to implement and I believe we get four hundred and seventy-five dollars to do everything that a regular school is supposed to do. So, it's, it's a good thing, we want to do it, but without enough funding, it's impossible to actually do that.
Thank you. I'm John, I'm from Maryland, I'm the president of the board. And there isn't really much that I can say that's any different than what anybody else has said here. The bottom line for us, our enrollment's about a hundred and forty-seven kids, something like that, or by just like three point two more, a little bit more maybe. Our backs are against the wall. The McClary decision says the legislature has to fully fund education. You're not compliance. Okay, the Supreme Court said that we can't use levy money to pay wages out. We have contract lists coming up, we have no direction whatsoever, we don't have money to deal with raises. And is it appropriate that we just keep adding try days as a way of cheating? I mean, that's really what it is. Okay? So, we're here, we have celebrations, sure, we've, we've got some distance learning so we can comply with Core Twenty-four. We've got some other programs that are going, but, you know, we can only do so much with what we have. And so, we're looking for direction from you. We have reduced enrollment, our enrollment has dropped ten kids since last year. We've had to eliminate our principal position, that's a hundred thousand dollars for us. Okay, so this one year, we're having to have to pick up that extra work. I realize that Sierra Pacific down here is probably gonna do a really good job, but that means those wage-in, or in family wage jobs or living in the community, we've got people that are leaving. And, and how long has it been now, three, five years since the McClary decision? What are we supposed to do? So, that's my question to you people. What would you have us do?
What, sorry?
I'm sorry, what would you have us do with the financial constraints that we're under?
It sounds like you're making tough decisions right now that you don't, that you shouldn't have to make. And the McClary funding is gonna be probably the only topic next year, I would have to say. It's gonna be the first thing we talk about and the last thing we talk about. We did put a significant amount of money in, in K-12 education. Last year was quite a lot of money. It wasn't all the way there, but the, one of the big things, you hear about the levy reform or the McClary fix bill that we've sent to the, the Supreme Court for consideration. Both of us reported against it because we wanted to come up with a plan this last year on funding of K-12. But this, the, the big question that they have there is a lot of schools are counting their try days as part of their basic education. So, if, which they can't, so you can't use try days as part of basic education costs. So, this study is, is going to attempt to find those schools, the bigger schools and they generally do, the urban schools. Find those schools and identify all of the try days that are being added into the K-12 calculation so we can come up with how big the check has to be that we have to write.
Have you looked at what the levy cliff, those change in that formulation is gonna do to the smaller schools?
Yes, oh, you have, great. I have looked at the levy cliff. Not all of the schools in the thirty-fifth district have levy cliff ramifications, some of them do. We, I will not vote for a bill that doesn't hold all of the schools solid and harmless in that. And basically, I think the way that that's gonna happen is all schools are gonna see an increase in their funding, so you, so from whatever level that they were currently at. So, that fix is going to be there, they just, yeah, the legislature punted on it this year. But the reason that the legislature punted on the levy cliff is because that is part of the basic McClary funding mechanism. So, we don't want there to be a levy cliff problem anymore, we want there to be adequate funding. So, I think we're going to see the solution come out next year and you're gonna see a significant increase in funding levels. I understand your ability to compete is terrible. I, I talked to Dana quite a bit about the ability to go out and, and, yeah, you can save entry wage, but you can get eighty try days or fifteen try days. Yeah, that's a terrible, that's a terrible uphill battle for you guys to fight. And I really would like to see a reform that removes try days and, and comes up with an adequate teacher pay schedule. That way, we're playing on the same, you know, sheet of music, you know, as.
It's not our intention to, to be rude or toward you, I mean, you're in the same position as everybody else. It, it's just our back is against the wall and you are our only conduit, if you will, to the rest of the legislature that, how critical this money situation is for us.
Yeah, no, I couldn't agree more. I mean, the, that and the try day issues are probably the two biggest issues that the rural districts have, that the urban districts just don't seem to understand at all. When they can levy a dollar and get twice as much money as three dollars with levy in your school district. I understand, we have to have a basic education formulary that takes into account the difficulties in the rural communities and holds them harmless when we come, so, so you don't have a big, you know, shortfall. We're not going to do that, there's going to be adequate funding.
So, if that's the case, if we use levy money for wages, does that mean since you're not gonna hold us harmless, that you're gonna then backfill and reimburse it to that levy money that, that gets used in try days?
Well, the way that I look at the solution is, we're getting, we pay about nine thousand eight hundred dollars per student. I would, my fix would be a portion, would be half levy, you know, local levy transfers, so the state would take on the local levy burdens. Still giving you an ability to levy money at a reduced level. The other thing would be we would, we would increase the per pupil rate to, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve thousand dollars per student. If you do the combination, it comes up to about the, you know, the four point five billion or something like that that we're talking about. So, I think you're gonna see a myriad of reforms that are, that's gonna get us there, but the, the end dollar amount, yes, you'll be held harmless. And the raises you have to get to stay competitive, we're gonna try to build into a new teacher salary matrix.
One of the challenges, first of all, I have to backtrack to what you said, you know, that someone apologizes about the anger, I don't, you don't need to apologize. I mean, this is an issue, you know, we're, we're in a unique situation in the state. I mean, I, I understand the frustration, you know, I got, my last son graduates in a couple of weeks and I'm living it, you know, too, and see the struggles that go on in the community. You know, one of the inherent issues we have in the state that with the, we're a unique state in the way we fund it and the way we, way we manage it. And, you know, yeah, the constitution says fully fund education. And we, we hear, you know, get rid of, get rid of the unfunded mandates, get rid of the, you know, don't tell us how to do it. But then on the flip side, we'll hear, forgive all teachers, set a state scale. You know, so it's one of these things, it's like, well, we want, we don't want you to tell us what to do over here, bro, over here, please, you know, I get it. I mean, it's, it's frustration we have, but, you know, we've, we've got to turn education on its head and how we're doing it in the state. And I, I mean, this, I hope we're having some kind of closing here towards the end, you know, with this kind of goes into it. I think, you know, we need to look at a per pupil amount that we give to the state, each district, and we have some core requirements of graduation and just set it loose and go do it. The problem is though is that we get every district, you know, across the state saying, well, we need this, we need that. I think as a state, again, we need to look at a funding level, turn it loose, go do it. And you know what, if you want to offer six different foreign languages, then yeah, go get it with a levy. But as a state, I think we go up with a dollar amount that, that works. And, you know, I, I'm curious, I mean, what do you guys think of having, I mean, one of the talks the legislators is going to statewide teacher scale? And you'd have, you'd have variations based on geography and demographics, you know, but that would be controlled by the legislature. So, are you willing to give up that control?
If you did that, that would be one thing, and that might make the incentives at a local district a, a true incentive for relocating. And that might be, might be worthy of consideration. But how can we compete with a Bellevue school district or something like that unless you do something like that?
If, you know, you're gonna have to raise the teacher salaries for us to compete and we're gonna have to recognize that it is a value to have the highly educated teachers in the rural communities.
So, what do you anticipate on teacher salaries in the next session?
We are talking about, the, the first thing we're talking about is entry pay, because entry pay is quite low. So, we're talking about some reforms there, raising the entry teacher salary just somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars. It's not a huge raise, but it's, it's a step in the right direction and it does.
They're thirty-seven and change now, going to fifty thousand dollars, most people in this county would say that's a pretty significant raise.
Yes, it is, but for the amount of time, what they're getting paid for the amount of time they have to put into education to get it, I still think it's a little low. But if we can get our, the entry salary somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars, we're going to be doing a lot for the rural community's ability to compete. The problem is we have a shortage of teachers, which everybody knows. We're talking to our four-year institutions and our two-year institutions about what they can do to help streamline the educator process of what, what you have to go through to become an educator. We're trying to streamline the, the, you know, alternative pathways. I've been talking to a couple of superintendents about alternative pathways and they say it's a good tool that we use, however, it is pretty cumbersome rule. So, we'll be working on alternative pathways, reforms to try to get that. So, I think we're, it's kind of a shocking approach from my perspective on how we're going to help the rural communities, but it's gonna have to be some sort of try day reform. It's gonna have to be some sort of basic teacher salary reform. I mean, it's not gonna be just one thing that gets us out of the, the spot that we're in.
How many students, yeah? I'm sorry, how many students?
We're about one forty-sevenish, something like that.
All right, next up, North Mason.
Hi, first I'd like to apologize, we've been a little tardy. We had another event that I had written on later, so thank you for your patience. Art and I are mixed with our time, so I'm gonna start with some of our celebrations. We are very proud of the fact that we did pass a bond a couple of years ago in the midst of a very large building project. We opened our new high school this year. We will open our new middle school in the fall, it's very exciting. We will be taking advantage of the board next week for the renovation of the old high school attic, make the new administration building. And that will be followed by moving out of the administration building so that we can move Head Start and Boys and Girls Club into our old building. It's a community children's center and build our new stadium. So, we're very excited about those things. Some of the other celebrations is we were, completed our application for CEP funding this year so that all of our elementary school students receive free breakfast and lunch. And we don't have a stigma for our kids on that and everyone can eat and be taken care of. We are also, like, picking out in the process of planning for comprehensive preschool programs because as rural as we are, we don't have a lot of providers in our community. We're a little bit not quite as far along, we anticipate being able to open a comprehensive preschool year after this, but we're very excited about that opportunity. We have also added a full-time families liaison and drug and alcohol counselor, admission to our counselors that we have at each school to support the needs of our children. Like we've heard from everybody else, we are, I mean, more and more it's severe needs for mental health and, and disabilities among our children who come to our schools. And we need better and stronger programs to support them, so those are things that we are looking for. We also are challenged by filling openings, as you know, and we've talked about it a lot. We are sitting next to Lake Washington with their eighty days and we're outputting eleven days on top of the state schedule. It's pretty hard to get anybody to come talk to us at the job fair, but our staff has done an excellent job. We have looked in our region in a thirty-mile radius of North Mason's sports park office. The median number of days in five is fifteen point four and just to the run of us in pickup time, we do a thirty-mile radius around Central Pickup Office. And so, we kind of sneak in there and bring their average down, but the average is still closer to almost thirty, twenty-five, thirty. So, as you can see, the, the challenges that we all face. For us, adding the equivalent of a try day is another fifty thousand dollar check that goes into our budget. And we were very careful this year when we passed our levy that we were considerate of our community to actually not choose to raise our levy at all. We are, we, we maintain for the next four years the same dollar amount. dollar amount in consideration of the fact that people in our community have not found that recovery that the rest of the nation is experiencing has made it our way a hundred percent. So we have to be careful, which is a challenge, we must like to pardon, but we believe it's the right thing to do for our community. We are one of the districts that is fortunate right now in that we are not impacted by the levy that already announced our debt about just twenty-two percent of our budget. So we will not be negatively impacted if something should not occur, but we support all of our colleagues in making sure that nobody has to face that problem. And I think, let's see what else. The thing that I wanted to address that Wes brought up, that you've heard in different voices from different people tonight, is that you've heard flexibility as we look at solving this area, coming up with the model. As you know, when we talked a couple of weeks ago, you know, the impending mandates, in nineteen seventy-seven, as I told you, I've ordered you a copy, the Common School Manual was just under an inch thick. Last time they printed it, it was over seven inches thick, and it was on end in skin paper. And I didn't get one, but it, most people just read it online. And really, and we did fund charter schools with much more flexibility than charter schools. Public schools could use the same kind of flexibility and commit to charter schools. Give us a chart, tell us what needs to be met up, and then press the people who are in our schools, are very talented, very well-educated, very well-prepared educators, to do the right thing and give our kids what they need to do for the future. And don't, just take away the burdens of October sixteenth, Constitution Day, because you know if that's the only day we teach about the Constitution, we're in big trouble with this. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Hi, my name's Tara White. And I'm the president of North Mason School. Just to add a couple of things I wanted to add, one, another celebration that isn't directly our school board or our school district, our school district, however, does have an impact on our future. And that is, from our community, we have, while we have a very supportive community, and we get to the other side of that community, part of the very supportive community we have, we just got a surprisingly wonderful endowment, not for the schools, but for our kids. I sit on another board, which is the North Mason Scholarship Foundation, which I was a part of before I became a school board member. But it's the community that created this with the school, which raised people to push this to happen, starting back in, oh, almost nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, officially got started, right, two thousand, got started there. I've been their treasurer. Many of them, local community members, created this foundation in order to generate an endowment for kids to go to college with, offering interest. It started very small, but we had one community member right after that, with this fifty thousand dollars to get started. Well, over the years, we have built that out to four hundred thousand dollars as an endowment. And now, all of a sudden, we've just got another six hundred thousand dollar boost. So we're over a million dollars in the endowment to be able to help kids from North Mason, which includes our great few kids, to go off to college. The goal of this operation is, of course, to eventually be able to fund every kid that graduates from North Mason High School fully through college. They're a long way from there, but it's encouraging to meet them, well, let's start this one. So that's just a celebration which isn't directly us, but it's our kids. And I want to get to the other side of the community. While we have, I believe, a very supportive community on the whole, we do have also the side of, I'm sure all of them, the side of the community that really is not supportive or has an agenda that doesn't agree with whatever things that we do say or whatever. And I want to bring that up because that's something that I think you guys could help. We have, as a board, have not discussed this, so I can't speak for that. I'm just speaking for myself, for myself. And they would have to, you know, agree or dispute, but the issue is what's important. And it came, I think, it didn't come to you, it went through the committee and didn't get beyond that. And that is Public Records Act. I believe that our entire board does support Public Records Act fully and completely. And I saw it too. But there are some flaws in it, particularly now that when the act was created, there weren't computers, and there wasn't internet, that sort of stuff. But now that there is, there are ways that people are, and this is where some of the people in our community have found ways to work with, put their advantage and our disadvantage, and to the taxpayers' disadvantage. And we were hit with that. I certainly am not going to name any names of other things. Nevertheless, the issue that comes to, that I hope gets to you and gets to the committee, is that the Public Records Act needs to be fixed. The way it sits now, anybody who wants to can harass a public agency, whether it's a school district or not. And they can do it, and they can do it to the point where all they have to do is just keep Public Records Act, Public Records Act, Public Records Act, mass ones that both impact our time overall more, the superintendent and for the district staff, in order to comply with mass Public Records Act. We didn't get hit as bad as we could. We got hit, I would say, between the better than hundred thousand dollars that we had to pay, cancer, all of that stuff. And we had two lawsuits against them. Eric Dunham, I can't say who, when he was sued, they were, they were, signed off, they were punished. So they're done with it. They can't come back at us with those things. Nevertheless, the issue that they or anyone else can do is, they can continue to do these Public Records Act issues. And what we, what I've learned apart from my colleague John Campbell here, is, and from the Vermont School District, is there are people out there, not just after school districts, but after government agencies, big ones, small ones, whatever it is, that simply go after you, make you do all sorts of answering requests, and you look for a little mistake you make, and plus, they catch you. It's a gotcha. Well, we've got a little bit of that. But it can be a lot worse. They getcha, and they gotcha. And what, that to me does not seem right, that a person should be able to do it for those reasons. How do you find out whether those reasons? Because these people are good at saying, oh, I'm the knight in shining armor, shining light on wrong things you're doing. That kind of attitude is very hard to deal with. But when we have to pay, not yet them, have to pay in order, in order that amounts of money and time and the staff time to address these issues, which we do have issues, it's the Public Records Act problem. Then, the potential for a lawsuit is going to get us into, or costs and what have you. And if that lawsuit goes, or goes very bad, most of these people doing this know that sooner or later, we're going to be so sick of dealing with them that we're going to settle. There goes another hump of money, hundred fifty thousand dollars, hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, or whatever it is, to settle, to get them out of our hair. Well, that's taxpayer money. If, I believe, if our taxpayers knew that's what was going on, they would shut these folks down real fast. Anyway, I want to bring that to your attention. I think you probably aren't aware of some fashion, maybe this, but anyone else's attention. But, yeah, we got hit with this, and it cost us over a hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, hopefully we're done, but maybe we're not. And maybe, yeah, the rest of you are having some of these kinds of problems as well. So that's just, again, I'm speaking personally, although my colleagues have dealt with this as well. Otherwise, thanks.
There were several reforms that were proposed. John, you came and testified a couple times on a couple, on two separate bills. Drew actually sponsored a bill that, I'm just going to reiterate a little bit, that would end out-of-state requests. I think that's important, too. I mean, the out-of-state is just so inefficient for money on public records. The Open Public Meetings Act is for citizens of Washington State or citizens of your jurisdiction have the right, because the public paid for the documents to be generated. They have the right to have access to the document. However, there are some reforms that we're talking about right now. One is, we want to limit, if somebody says they want all records related to, those sort of things really are kind of the crux, the reason why it costs so much money to prepare the documents. The other thing that we're talking about is a reason for the request. So what are you looking for? So I think we're going to see those reforms. And Dana, you know I'm absolutely committed to removing some of the barriers you guys have that are unfunded. I would really like to just give you a check and say, hey, you have a school board, you have a superintendent, so let's now go do a good job. And oh, by the way, over five years, we'll come and check on how good a job you're doing. But at least, we would back off of all of these huge testing requirements and testing machines that we have on. So it's going to be a push of mine, and I will work, again, next year on trying to fix the open meetings, the public meeting act.
And just to follow up on the public records, yeah, I had a bill once, one other, and they were both at strong bipartisan support. There's two, two main factions that testified against them. One is a gentleman that lives in Olympia who made a significant seven-figure settlement off a public records request. And his lifestyle is now testifying in Olympia against any reforms on public records. And, sorry, the other one is the newspapers. They are very powerful forces, and they will not, they have been very difficult to work with in an act, in any type of sensible reform. But, you know, it was one of these things where it really came to a head last year in a couple of small jurisdictions. There was a poor hospital district that had this lobbard with some public records issues. And so the balance side was that happened late last year, and it went into a short session. It's hard to enact significant reform on any type of policy, and we tried, but it ran out of the clock. And I think you're going to see some significant changes in 2017, certainly Ariana, who I don't know what gets.
I have a little comment for you, personally. I'm really appreciative of the work that you guys are doing. And I believe that it was important, by the way, I really feel that you guys are in silence and very, I feel it right here. I didn't feel that two years ago. And of course, that's really, it's working.
So great faith, I've not seen in all this room.
And also, I do believe that there's got to be a way, I'm sure there's a way, and I think that's what you guys will have to figure out, to satisfy the newspapers and satisfy open public meetings and all those processes, but to still figure out how to stop those, those people that are really taking taxpayers' money.
The reason I mentioned all requests or all documents are related to, and the reason for request is, the newspapers seem to be somewhat amicable to that change. However, there are, you know, people in the media would like to do broad requests because then they can find something that they can do in exposure. And so, yeah, there's, we're going to continue to have pushback, but I think we're going to pass a bill, whether we have pushback or not. I think the appetite is here and now, and we will pass reforms on that.
One other tip in on that, the one of the talks we've had, too, is using capital budget money and, don't hold me to this, this is a very broad concept, but doing some type of a cloud that, you know, you can choose to, as a district, to upload your information in that, so people do basically their own public records request. And it would be, and I think there's a, the problem is, like, the Belfer Water District, how you go, the archive going back to nineteen, oh, two, or whenever they came into existence. You know, that's more costly, but we can maybe start the problem, or start to fix the problem going forward, and I think that would be part of the solution as well.
Yeah, that is one of the things we are pushing for, is, we're trying to push all of our, the government agencies that we represent to be as open as possible. That way, we can even just say, yeah, well, it's online, go find it. Now, it's, the request is burdened at that point in time.
I have a question, last question, suggestion. When our rural rolls were very small, we had a really lazy doctor in the community. It was Dr. Kane, just love the guy. And, you know, he wasn't always super personal with the parents, but he was awesome when he came to make sure your kids had the milk, best healthcare possible. And I know he came to our community because we were a very poor community. He had a poor position. Is this something we can do with teachers and say, you know, if you go teach in one of these poor communities, you know, obviously it'll have to scale, it points out where those needed communities are, we'll pay for their public education. And maybe that would help some of these teachers who decided to commit themselves to this process, to help them get their foot in the door. Maybe there's some young high school kids who are like, you know, I can qualify, I can do that. If you pay for my education, I'll go teach there. I mean, maybe is it something we look at some incentives to get our teachers?
There are some incentives now, but they're not bold enough. If we're going to fix the education, the teacher shortage, we're going to have to get older, and that's a good idea, to teach locals fellowship grants, those kind of things would be a very good idea, worth while looking into.
Okay, next up, Southside.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Cummings, the vice president and legislative representative of the Southside School Board. You know, as a school district director, the funding of education is of paramount importance to me as a voter. The, I want that to be the issue. I don't really want you to spend your time trying to satisfy the unconstitutional mandate of overreaching Supreme Court into the separation of powers, but I do want you to do this fully fund education. Right now, in our school district, we have just under two hundred students and a budget of approximately two point four million, three hundred thousand, which is not high budget, so it's really not applicable to our operating budget. That's two point one million. If we were to say, you know, let's do twelve thousand dollars per student across the board, that would effectively not change our budget at all. Miriam and Knight would see their budget slashed by those numbers. I'm concerned that seventy-five percent of the school districts in Washington State are smaller rural school districts. They're classified as being small and rural. That sometimes, you know, we need to take into account whenever we're talking about a per capita system, that there are, there are schools that are so small that a huge portion of that would go to just the basics, paying for the building, paying for the lights, paying for the maintenance. Simple things like having enough administrators and qualified teachers are a struggle for us. We just went through a lengthy process of negotiating the contract. We are forced to task our superintendent, we're going to the teachers year after year, and saying, we know that you're underpaid. We know that you are under, are overworked, never underappreciated, but always overworked and underpaid, but there's just no money there. And that's where I want you to focus, is on funding education more than infrastructure and, and things that, as far as the question of, do you fund this portion or that portion? I like the idea of saying, local school district, here's the money, go do what you were elected to do. I like that idea. I'm not so sure that the formula of entirely based on per student ratio is going to be fair to the smaller districts, which are most of the districts in the state of Washington. I don't know exactly what that formula needs to be. I actually think it would be great if between now and the start of the next legislative session, if we could get some communication between legislators and the representatives of school boards to talk about what would be a good funding mechanism that doesn't, you know, that doesn't specify, this dollar goes for this, this dollar goes for that, this dollar goes for a book, this dollar goes for a teacher. But accepts, or that acknowledges the reality, in smaller school districts, there are some basic things that we must have, that in a larger pool of students, those expenses are spread out more evenly. So I think that's important. I do want to celebrate some things that have happened in Southside. You know, three years in a row of Washington Academic Achievement Awards, two years of school, we've been given the award of a school of the station. We overcame a fifteen percent budget deficit to bring our school into the black. You know, as a school board, we're very appreciative of our one and only administrator, our superintendent slash principal. You know, really, she's doing a ridiculous amount of work that should be done by at least one and a half, if not two full-time administrators. But there's no budget for that. Those are, those are issues that we would like to see rectified. I'm concerned about the fact that we need to, we need to get to a point where the seventy-five percent of districts that are smaller are being given a little bit of extra help, so that they can meet their basic needs that every school district has, but still be able to compete. You know, I, I do want to make a comment or make a pitch. I know that you guys are in a very difficult position being I know that you guys are in a very difficult position, being, you're kind of across the aisle from the majority caucus, so your voices don't carry as much weight as they might on the other side. But I want, I want you to keep fighting for the local schools as you have been. And here's, here's one of the things that concerns me. I use an example from outside of our county. I know a school teacher, a high school teacher, who has a master's degree, and in order to be fully qualified to do the teaching that he needs to do, he's taking a second master's degree. He's currently in his mid-30s, began college as a high school graduate at 18 years old. He is approaching a six-digit student loan debt, and he's almost 40, just trying to keep up with the educational standards that he needs to be in order to do an adequate job as a high school teacher. I just feel like, as Representative Griffey alluded to earlier, the reward should be commensurate with the investment that good teachers make in themselves to make themselves better teachers. I don't know that there's an easy solution, but I think that the best solution is gonna come from legislators, school board directors, and educators and administrators sitting down in small groups and large groups and working out the kinks in the system that right now is in serious need of reform. Lastly, and then I'll give, both of you the rest of the time to respond unless someone else from our district wants to jump in. In our school district, we're experiencing a serious teacher-administrator classified support substitute shortage. I know, it's a mouthful, that's what it is. You know, it's really hard to find substitutes, even emergency substitutes, right now, and it's creating a serious hardship for us. And with the way things are, you know, there are certain tasks that only an administrator can do, certain tasks that only a certain qualification of teacher can do, certain tasks, I mean, it's, like, these things are so regimented and segmented that in a district as small as ours, and I imagine it's even worse with our neighbors over in the Matlock area, in a, in a school as small as ours, when, when a couple of teachers get sick, we're all, we're all in a panic mode. So, those are some things that we just wanted to put for you and give you a chance to ponder and respond to.
I just, you know, on the master's degree issue, I, anybody can answer this. I personally, I take a little bit of issue that getting a master's degree makes a teacher a better teacher. You know, we, that's the, that's the model that we create, and as I just, I mean, is there some strong disagreement with that?
Well, there's a lot of different categories out there that master's degrees teach people to do, and the same argument that you've proposed could be extended to a doctorate also. And we actually are academicians, we want our kids to be as academically involved as possible, and in order to do a good job of that, teachers have to be highly educated also. So, we, we support our teachers in giving their master's degree, we think it adds depth and a width to their instruction, and we don't want any, we don't want any concept put out there that a master's, master's degree is not worth it. We think it adds depth, which can buy.
So, just to play devil's advocate on that though, okay, if I'm graduating from college right now, why, why would I take on six figures of debt for, and then this feeds into the argument on teacher pay, why would I do that? It makes no economic sense. You know what I mean?
And that was kind of my point, is that, you know, you know, the term master's degree actually was, it's created to mean a degree for a teacher, that's why it's called a master's degree. So, really, I think it is arguable that a teacher should aspire to a master's degree by the time they're, you know, reaching the midpoint of their career, if not sooner. But having said that, we created this situation where it is so expensive to go get that education that the reward is not commensurate with the, with the investment. I mean, you shouldn't have to be, you know, that, when you're about to draw your first social security check, you have paid your last student's monthly. So, I agree with what Representative Hewin, that we've gotta fix something there. I don't know if it's that, you know, two master's degrees might be more than necessary, but we created some, but there are some specific specialized programs, like in this case, the teacher I was referring to teaches English and drama. Well, there's a lot of specialized skill involved in teaching those subjects. So, I understand that there's a reason why there's two master's degrees, but I think it's important that our teachers are paid well enough that they can get out of debt while they still have time to pay for a house.
Yeah, and I'm not diminishing the, I know, master's degree, but I didn't mean that, just. We, we still wonder why we have a teacher shortage, why would you do that? I think that's, you know, strictly from an economic standpoint.
Right, if you were the teacher, you would wonder is it worth it?
Well, they, they are wondering that, that's why we put so much of our time as invested in looking at what, what a salary level, a new entry-level salary level would look like to encourage people to go on the profession. You know, I think, there was a couple bills we passed this year that gets us there, everyone pays a competitive grant for $100 to take a test. I mean, maybe that would help, but I think the biggest thing that's gonna help is wage hours working conditions, right? So, you have to be competitive in wages, hours, working conditions, and I think we are not in rural communities as competitive as the urban community, so we're gonna have to figure out what that compromise is gonna look like. Back to something that you just, that you said, Jerry, if we're going to have a urban fix to a rural problem, if we don't get every superintendent in this room to be active with WASDA, to be active with the Superintendents Association, that's gonna be what happens. I mean, we will argue till we're blue in the face, and we're going to have, end up getting an urban fix to a rural problem. So, all, everybody that, you know, you meant, if you're mad and frustrated at us, you need to get focused and you need to get a directed, a direction from all the associations, or we will get a one-size-fits-all urban fix and it's not be tolerated.
So, just two quick questions to follow up, actually, they're not follow up, they're unrelated. Several of the school districts in here were referred to as theater school districts. We're thankful to our neighbors in Shelton that we have a high school to send our kids to because we only teach through the seventh grade. That said, we are helping to fund that high school, and our voters, or taxpayers, do not get represented in the government of that school district. What we created is taxation without representation. What can we do to make sure that voters like ours who elected us get represented in those school districts where their kids are going to high school because our tax dollars are helping to fund those schools?
This is about a liaison, is it a board? I mean, there's one, it's not gonna stall the whole thing, but there's one, I mean, why wouldn't you have liaison at the board? That would be a good start, I think, you know? Yeah, but it's the same argument that somebody owns property and has a renter, that renter can vote for a tax increase, the property owner's paid, whether they live there or not, I mean, that's...
So, taxation without representation, I think is a little big charge, however, if they had to vote, then it would be the North Mason School District, you know, if we're talking about great people. If they had a vote in, you know, it wouldn't be Pioneer School District, it would be Shelton School District. So, we have to be very careful when we talk about that because there's been consolidation ideas out there, people like to see our theater schools consolidated into the bigger schools, and if you gave, if you functionally changed the district boundaries, you would basically be taking over that school district by, so you would lose your identity, if you will. And a lot of schools do not wanna lose their identity, they wanna stay the small rural school that they've always seen, so.
And then, lastly, on behalf of the Southside School Board, I'd like to invite both of you to come for a tour of the Southside School. We'd like to set up a time where we can walk you through it, let you see what we're doing, and, you know, nothing like it ends on, on opportunity to, it's easy for us to say, oh, we need this, we need that, we'd love for you to come and just walk you through the school.
Okay, let's do it in any, any district. Don't forget seeing the internet cables run outside.
Last impressions, last impressions. Okay, moving on to now Shelton.
So, the Shelton School Board would like to commend our legislature for the work you do in Olympia representing all the citizens here in the 35th District. And while you've had countless people and organizations vying for your ear, you remain steadfast in providing tweaks to the two-year operating budget. I believe this year's supplemental operating budget increased by only half of 1%. And while supporting wildlife suppression efforts, the supplemental budget also made targeted enhancements in mental health and education in at least 18 areas of education that I counted. It's easy for us to overlook all of the ways that the legislature has invested in education because it may not directly affect our day-to-day operations and help us out with our most important issues. But we want our district to excel, we want to understand and appreciate the benefit of these 18 areas to education as a whole and across the state. So, I wanna take a moment and express to you our thanks for the various ways in which you've supported education throughout this two-year campaign, including pay raises for teachers and substantial increases in the MSA. We all know teachers are a very important part of education and salary is a part of that ongoing discussion. With or without salary schedules, it's difficult to compare teacher salaries with try-hours and health benefits reported differently across the state, and there's pros and cons to all those options. Regardless of how salary issues are resolved, teacher shortages will still be a living problem. In addition to replacing the teachers who are retiring, moving on for various reasons, districts including ours are hiring more teachers to address the K through 3 class size reduction, creating a demand that may be larger than the number of teachers in the pipeline. Shortages are more severe in areas of special education, math, science, and bilingual education. Shelton School District needs more bilingual teachers to balance the Hispanic population in some of our buildings. On top of that, our enrollment in our district is steadily increasing, plus we have a bubble effect coming up through some of the grades, which will require more teachers in those grades. To sum it up, we need teachers at many grade levels, not just K through 3, and in many of the hard area, hard-to-find areas. We worry how this will impact our students as we try and attain the services we are committed to providing, in particular, as we plan to move into subsequent phases of our graduation matters in Shelton. We seek stability so as not to stall momentum. The state's Basic Education Finance Task Force recommends removing levy-funded wage enhancements from collective bargaining. This could be a helpful tool to provide review from some of the more expensive items in collective bargaining, like those try-hours and health benefits too. In essence, these costs take up a significant chunk of our funds in our letting. As noted earlier, the capital budget increased funds for school construction assistance. And as the next legislature begins the work on the two-year budget, capital budget, we ask for a continued review on how school construction is funded. Technology and safety have significantly changed. They've changed our view of school layouts and they'll add significant costs to future buildings. If enrollment continues to grow, Shelton Schools will be faced with building schools for the 21st century using 20th century funding only. We also support curtailing the unfunded mandates. Much of the new spending and many of the proposed bills are earmarked and grant-based, which generally ends up becoming another unfunded mandate. Again, these things substantially reduce our levies and limits what our agents provide to our students. In closing, the legislature has the unenviable task of creating a budget which finds a delicate balance between defining and amplifying funding base of education, while still attending to other important needs in the state and yet not to cover the taxpayer. To broker the Washington State Supreme Court's summary decision, fundamental reforms are needed for Washington to meet its constitutional obligations to its students. Pouring more money into an allocated system will not succeed. And with recent changes in the federal education legislation, the state is in a position to make positive changes on how we educate in our state, allowing for schools to reimagine and provide the 21st century education for our students. While the legislature has much work to do next year, and sometimes from our point of view, it seems to move painfully slow, we ask that its fundamental reform work be accomplished as quickly as possible, and please make the passage of the budget a priority and with as few special sessions as possible. Thank you.
One thing, I'm standing to do a great job at addressing a lot of the issues and the needs. I'm Sally Brown, Philadelphia Chair of Shelton School Board. And we do have some celebrations as well. In recent months, we picked up graduation matters, and one thing that that's really helped us do is to create some real vital community partnerships. I really think that that's the only way we're really gonna get forward in, in education for all of us who's in with that, relationship building and being totally committed and inclusive of our whole communities. So, we have just signed off with the Mason General Hospital and are developing a health sciences academy and hopefully move down the way and, and add more academies in the coming years. So, lots of training for our teachers to get the academies going and, and bring that excitement for education, with the staff, the students, whoever they wanna go, and being able to get that started in high school. Just, a lot of positive, we see our young people, our young, every time we see, we see all the news on TV and all the horrible things and whatever, but in our own communities, every single community can say this. We have great hope in our young people. We say, we see them doing, whether it's scholastic things or in sports, they're knowledgeable, they're out in the community, they're doing community service projects, they are vital part of, of our life, our communities, not just in their own families, but they're, and part of that is the service learning kind of things that are happening in the schools and on community-based, the Hope Gardens that we have and are working on, those kinds of projects. So, though we have a lot of issues, the reason we're here and we're talking about those issues is because we have fabulous, fantastic young people coming up, and we wanna support them during the very best day in, in whichever way. And it is the schools, it is the teachers that are that guidance, and that is, you know, research shows the number one difference, especially at, well, all through school. Sometimes we forget about our high school students and go, oh, well, they're young adults and they need to go on their way, but number one element is a good, caring person that they trust in their lives. So, there's one teacher on that campus, a minister or a janitor or anyone else, that we're all in it together and we're here to support our kids.
Just a closing comment on behalf of the Shelton School District. Well, this evening, we listened and had an eloquent conversation about something that's geared to everyone's heart in this room, and that's our children and public education, our city, our state, and our country. There's nothing more important than the public education system that supports our children. When the President of China was in Tacoma, probably about six months ago, they asked him, what is the most important resource you have in your country? He said, our children and our education system. We talk about how important it is that all students achieve. We banter about in terms of making sure that all students are going to graduate. In order for that to happen, the state of Washington, the legislature, the government, parents in the community need to stand up once and for all and say that... parents in the community, need to stand up once and for all and say that education, public education in the state of Washington is a priority one. It impacts economic prosperity, economic development, and quality of life. It is the foundation of everything. And we need to make sure that we have leaders in government that understand that concept beyond any doubt. The conversations this evening have been wonderful, great ideas, statements made about how important it is to support our kids. But to be quite honest, I've heard the same discussion for just about forty years. It's time to act and it's time to stand up for what's right. It's our children, it's our legacy, it's our destiny. And if we really mean what we say, that we want all students to be educated, that we want all students to succeed, that we want them to graduate from high school and have options before them that they can take advantage of, the time has come. From the governor to the legislature, let's face the music. If our public schools aren't of great quality, we suffer the consequences for years to come in all areas. So I really believe that our two legislators, I really believe that they support us and they support public education. What you need to do is go back to Olympia and lead, lead the charge. It takes courage to deal with this particular issue. It's huge, but we need people to have the strength and the fortitude to stand up against all odds and just say it. We need to do this for our kids. Time has passed and we continue to talk about the same things. We need to just have the courage to step up and lead. That's something that has been lacking in our country. People that will stand up, tell the truth, are honest, and support the people and support our children. It takes courage. That's what it's all about, no question in my mind. It takes courage to get things done and to maybe talk about things that aren't really popular. But in this case, public education is very popular. And now is the time, in my opinion, to fish and cut bait. Now, not tomorrow, now. And you said you want superintendents and everybody else in our profession to be behind you? Absolutely, we will be there. We've been there and we will continue to be there. But I will say that in talking to you on various occasions, I know you support public education. You need to get your colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Okay. Before closing remarks from the legislators, we are going to have about five minutes' worth of questions. So if you've been sitting all night and wanted a representative to speak for your district, now is your time. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I want to have a question for Art, um, for the school district. I've got a freshman and a junior who could give a holdup. Hurry up on that college thing.
Well done. Sorry. Other questions tonight? Sam?
The Shelton School District. I was wondering if you have ballpark numbers for how many students in your school district? And how many students? The number of students and your budget?
We have approximately 4,250 students currently, and as it was mentioned, we are growing rapidly every day. Our general fund is around 52 million, but when you consider grants and every other aspect of our budget, we're nearing 70 million, maybe a little bit more than that.
How many are in the high school?
Right now, we probably have between Choice High School and Shelton High School, right around 1,350. Can I ask the same question for North Mason?
Yes, 2169, just over 24 million.
Thank you.
I did just want to make a pitch for rural schools. I know in the greater state, even Shelton is considered rural. I graduated from Shelton High School, but I taught at Cook Canal for sixteen years and I did a lot of work way back in, at Mary Night as well. And there were years when it was so tough, especially Mary Night, where they kept wanting to consolidate, consolidate. And even though Cook Canal is a small school, it has one of the biggest geographical areas in the state of Washington. You cannot have little kids riding bus two hours one way to go to school. So I would, you know, those are the issues we also face throughout the state.
Okay, final comments. Drew, we'll start with you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And again, the frustrations that we hear, I don't take personally, I take it apart and, you know, I share it with you. And Doug, I'll also, you summed up very well how you heard that. You know, we, and I take that to heart, you know, let's, you know, I think we all got to get us a safer house. And I don't know if this is the solution, but a constituent asked me what, you know, this was going on tonight, what it was about, and I said, told her what the deal was, and she said to me, why do we have so many districts in this county anyway? And I just kind of phoned that back to me, is there a cross-sinkings there? That's a discussion you guys have to have. That needs to come from you off of the station thinking that at all. But I'd be interested to hear it back from you, from the smaller districts in the coming months. Is that a secret category to look at? And I get it, everybody wants their own t-shirt, I understand that. But maybe that's part of the solution. It doesn't mean that those schools go away, but maybe don't we get broader?
You know, just really quick on that, Drew. I got to live in Virginia as a military spouse. In Virginia, I don't know if you're aware, but there are Commonwealth, not a state, and it's Commonwealth each. Municipality and/or county is a separate government. And there are, most of the school boards are subsidiaries of either the county government or the city government, depending on which they're located in. So what happens in that case is when the budgets get tight, the teachers and the fire department and the garbage and the policemen all go on strike at the same time, and the schools get the shout.
I'd like to hear back from you.
That was my experience.
Yeah. No, and I'm not suggesting that schools under the county government are anything like that. But I've been looking at this, you know, how do we reform it, you know, how do we do it to have a per pupil dollar amount, and could there's issues of being resolved there that doesn't necessarily fit across the board? I think it's a start, and I think the state needs to back away from the number, definitely needs to back away from the number of mandates, including the test. I think we should set the state standard for science, math, English, and hypothetically, let's say we as a state say you need to get through biology in order to have a high school diploma in this state. Well, great, if a kid does that by their sophomore year, wonderful. If it takes them to their senior year, so be it, and let's say they need algebra, too. There's some kids that will ace that in freshman year, you know. But let's open that door, and this ties into the career and technical education. We are so focused on, you're there until 12th grade, I know we have running starts, some other programs have been wonderful tools, but gosh, you know, a kid can go to, not that they want to go to Seattle, but I bet they can go to Seattle, work in a shipyard there, a boat building yard, and start out at 40 grand a year at a high school, and within two years, be at 80. And why not open those doors for them? And, you know, the aerospace industry that we have, that is in this district, and safe for us up in KidSAP. I mean, there's tons of career and technical education things, and let's open those doors. Let's not keep them behind the walls of the school all the way through 12th grade, and then we can look at ways we can combine with employers and make that work. So I'm a big advocate for that. The other thing I just want to express as a parent is, and I don't have this issue anymore since my oldest son started driving a few years ago, didn't have to worry about this, but the biggest frustration I hear some other parents do are the half-days that are almost a full day. And I'm just telling you that, I'm, this is going to be my little fault for a moment here, complaining. It sucks. The burden that that puts on the parents? You know, the kid who fits on at 10 o'clock, great, I gotta work, you know, and I mean, it's, and I just, that is something you gotta fix. And this ties into, I would love to see the state a number of instruction hours. And if you guys want to have all half-days to go the year around, I don't care, do whatever works, but that is a frustration when you see a child in school for a handful of hours and has all kinds of days. I'm just sharing that as a parent, that is a frustration, so. But, you know, all in all, you know, we're all on the same team. We're gonna have some disagreements and things, and things aren't gonna go as quick as we want to sometimes. You know, unfortunately, Dan and I are through 147. If the rest of them agree with us, we'd have this wrapped up, but that's not even the nature. And I, you know, I just, both of my kids went through Shelton. I have one that's in the Marines right now, the little one about to graduate in a couple weeks. My oldest one, if you knew him, this would blow you away, he said to me, we talk quite a bit, he's technology, he lives on the other side of the world, you know, he's already thinking about possibly getting out within a few years, and I said, what do you want to do in football? I'm gonna go to college and I wanna teach, I wanna teach high school. I said, what? If you know my son, I would have, now, just say it. But you know why? Because he had a teacher that had an impact on him. You know, he didn't appreciate who he was there, but he does now. And, you know, and that's, and I think we all have those stories, you know. I look at, certainly in my political life, you know, the, one of the reasons I'm here is to be a teacher. That was Bob St. Pierre, I don't remember his name, you know, he challenged me and, you know, so I just bring that up, and, you know, we've got a lot to be happy about, a lot to be positive about, anywhere at those times, and it's just, let's get it done and so forth.
I just want to follow up with your representative doing, just to be fair, I think that the first-student funding concept is very meritorious. There are some definite positives to the idea of saying, we're gonna block grant the money to the local school district and let us do the job we were elected to do in our school districts. The only thing that I would like to kind of add to that as a caveat is, it kind of needs to be weighted for smaller school districts in some way so that there's understandably just some basic costs that every school district's gonna have, whether they have 20 students or 20,000 students. So, but I think that in theory, the general idea is a good concept, and it just needs to be tweaked in order to make it where it's leveling the playing field for smaller schools with some of the larger urban schools.
Well, thank you all for inviting me again, and it was riveting as it always is. I have met personally with most of you, and if I haven't met with you yet, again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to every school district, and it's really tough to get to all of them. So I make my commitment to those superintendents, the schools that I haven't been to yet, I will make it out there, we'll get to know each other well. A couple of things, we beat up the funding thing, that's gotta be on our plate next year, and, you know, we gotta get funding. But the things that I think we can do that, that I think are gonna be important is, because of the advances in technology, we can start embracing more blended learning. If we get the blended learning model off the ground in our schools, we can take all the tests away, because of blended learning, you're taking tests, and that helps direct you, you know, every day, basically, in a blended learning model, you could, you could have a different lesson plan. Maybe you're weak at this part of math and your lesson plan will automatically change. I think that as a future goal for all our schools, I think is gonna be a good goal, and I think it could then completely eliminate the need for these standardized tests, which take away so much time. I also am looking at more competency-based. If a kid is competent, why can't we move on to something a little more tough? So maybe the seat model, I think, is getting a little antiquated. Instead of the seat model, why don't we do a competency-based model where they, you know, a WGU is a good example of that. You could actually complete an entire class in one day as long as you take your pre-test and then pass your final exam with a very high score. So those are the places that I'm gonna be looking at. I'm still asking for a list of unfunded mandates. I've been begging for it, how about I ask ten times today? Okay, unfunded mandates, I need a list from the schools. If we can get a list and we can, we can start working on it, Drew and I, I guess, we could run an omnibus bill that would take some of the burdens out.
You could include the underfunded ones, too.
I can see it.
Underfunded and unfunded, both, I'd like, I need to see the list. If we can get most of the rural schools or most of the schools in the state to agree that these are areas we gotta approach. Now, I'll tell you, if, to comply with the query, we're going to fund schools with the prototypical school model as the model. So if you have this many students, you'll have this many principals, you'll have this many, so the idea behind not having a superintendent, not having, if you will, having a multi-position, that serves both positions. If we funded under the prototypical school model, that wouldn't be the case, so you would have direct funding that would pay for those positions. I think the prototypical school model, as I told you tonight, is, kind of puts us all in a box, and local flexibility suffers because of that. I would really rather just give you an adequate amount of money and let you do be the experiment. They brought up the experiment that is charter schools. I think it's a good experiment. We need to see how a relaxed regulatory model works, and then we can clone it. So if this, if it works, and the kids are doing well, and the charter schools are doing well, then let's clone it. Why can't we have the reduced regulations that they enjoy? So those are the things that I'll be working on as far as education goes. The other thing that I'm gonna keep pushing is growing our rural economy, and some of the areas that I'm trying to work on is the restrictions under the Growth Management Act that kind of hold our community back from being able to expand and grow local jobs so our kids can stay here and help get back to the community, which will also make the schools a little bit more, it'll help the schools through kind of a trickle-down, trickle-up approach. So I'll continue to work on all those things. And thank you so much for having me.
One last, you know, I think that it would also be useful that we do this with the teachers, and maybe you guys can help us, let's just give us, you know, a couple of teachers from every building, which I know is gonna make this much more crowded, but, and then without you guys here. No offense, but I'd be glad to, you know, to have that kind of conversation, I think we should do the same thing, if you all would assist us. You know, maybe when, in the school year, we could do that. And if it makes more sense if we just come to each school and do it, I mean, can somebody get back to us on that? What the best way would be?
Well, I could be saying with the subs, there's a couple of teachers from each school.
Well, we'd have to do it outside of hours, I mean, yeah, it'd have to be evening, you know. But I'm sure we can find some passionate teachers that'll come in.
Alex?
Yes, here's something out of bright field for you. You know, time on task, teachers working with students is extremely important in terms of the student achievement. If we were to ask a business, any business, to be open 180 days, they'd look at us and they'd say, I can only be open 180 days? What am I gonna do in 180 days? If you really stop and think about it, and you reflect on the challenges that are facing our public education system and our students, we're allocating basically 180 days of pay to our people. But in fact, the challenges are so great, and this is the agrarian model that's been in effect for 100 years. I mean, if we're really gonna get serious about public education and student achievement, again, stepping up to the plate and saying, education is extremely important, it's a year-round business. And we need to dedicate more time for planning, more time for professional development and budget for professional development. The only way you're gonna change a system in an organization is through its people. But if you have no resources in the general fund, let's say, for professional development, and teachers don't have time to meet and confer and to share best practices, how are we going to? budget for professional development. The only way you're going to change a system and an organization is through its people. But if you have no resources in the general fund, let's say, for professional development, and teachers don't have time to meet and confer and to share best practices, how are we going to begin to do the things that we've all talked about this evening? Our staff needs to be trained, they need time with one another, and we can piecemeal here and there to make that happen. But that's an important element in terms of improving the schools that we have today. Training our staff in a focused manner, making everybody accountable, those are critical issues, and the time to share best practices. In the last school district I was superintendent in, our board chair was a cardiovascular surgeon. And he said to me, you know, Alex, before we operate, we need for hours and hours and hours to diagnose the problem and to make a plan, how we're going to resolve the problem. And then we have Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, just in case something goes wrong in the operating room. Our teachers don't have that time, we don't have that luxury. We try to create it and to some degree we have it, but it's not happening and we need more time, more professional development.
All right, thank you, and three things on the way out the door. Number one, I think it's really important that we, as Mason County, stay connected. I think this is a great opportunity for us to continue to have our voice heard and conversations that can carry beyond the boundaries of Mason County. Number two, you know, we had this event a couple of years ago and now, once again, this year, we'd like your feedback, you know, so that we can continue to build upon this model. So please give that feedback to your superintendent so that we can continue to provide these opportunities in the very near future. And number three, before you leave, I would appreciate, because I'm responsible for the pickup, if you would help with chairs and tables if you're so capable this evening. But thank you, everybody, and legislators for coming out tonight, we appreciate it.